Was Aaron coming up with you? Okay. Aaron with you?
He was.
All right, okay. Okay. Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:02 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have a coordinator called to roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Valens?
Here.
Mr. Scavano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo? With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Rod Waddell, who's helping us with the broadcast tonight, and do we know if Channel 20 is working or not? Not yet. It is not working. Okay, good. All right. They're working on Channel 20, so we are available to livestream though. So we'll now recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. will make those presentations.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, board members. Last year, five RPS 205 graduates started college knowing they'll graduate debt-free thanks to Rockford Promise. This fall, Rockford Promise doubled the number of scholars. Ten RPS 205 graduates started college, two at Rockford University and eight at Rock Valley College, thanks to the promise. Rockford Promise hosted its annual fundraiser at Rock Valley College's Starlight Theater with a goal to fundraise for twenty RPS 205 graduates from the class of 2018 to attend college one year from now. At Saturday's event, Rockford Promise and its donors raised more than $36,000 for Rockford Promise Scholars and Scholarships.
Woo! Yeah.
The group's vision is to one day eliminate financial barriers to college for every RPS 205 graduate. Rockford Promise has the potential to transform Rockford. We'd like to thank the Rockford Promise Board for their vision and for supporting Rockford Public Schools, its students, and our community. And we have representatives from Rockford Promise who are here this evening. Please join me in thanking them and giving them a round of applause for their work in supporting our students.
Thank you, Elaine. Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful event. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Outstanding event. It was fun. Good to see you. Great job, Brian. Fun event.
This Riverdale issue, by the way, has already been addressed, and we've tried to call them all week, and they aren't returning our phone calls.
Okay, all right. Well, we have eleven, we have a lot of speakers. Yeah, okay. Elaine, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, Ken. Thank you.
Okay, all righty.
On behalf of Rockford Promise's Board of Directors, we are very grateful for the support that we've received from RPS 205. We have two board members who are employees of RPS 205, who give a significant amount of time to our effort and to Susan Fumo, who chaired our event last Saturday night, and the school counselors, who help identify the students who would be most qualified to be recipients of our, of our scholarship. So without the support of RPS 205, we would not be successful in what we're, what we're doing, so we thank you very much.
Great, thanks. Keep it going. Great job.
Thank you, sir. That is all.
Okay. We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting, where we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during the petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to our Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of thirty minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with our guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at one time, the one whose turn it is to speak and the person who will speak next. When you are the second person, please come to the front and sit in a vacant chair. That way, we'll be able to devote the maximum amount of time for our public comments. If you look to the wall over here, you'll see a digital clock showing the guidelines for the two minutes. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. So our first speaker tonight is Elizabeth Figueroa, to be followed by Reverend Derek Shelby. Elizabeth? Right. I'm gonna have you hit the button for the microphone there. There you go. Thank.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Figueroa. My son go to Riverdale School, and the point that I want to share with you guys is my son right now is going to take classes in his trailer outside, which I don't think is acceptable. He doesn't have any condition for them to be in there. It's not safe at all. And I don't see the point. Why do schools need to have two gyms? And the session I can see is my fix the problem is to convert the gym into four, to two or four classes, classroom for the kids before this winter, because it's not, it's not safe at all for the kids to be outside.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Reverend Derek Shelby, to be followed by Bob Gurle.
St. Mark, Chapter 8, Verse 36. "For what shall it profit a man," Jesus said this, "for what shall it profit a man if he shall gain the whole world and lose his own soul?" "What shall it profit a man," the Lord Jesus said, "if he shall gain the whole world and lose his own soul?" We had a meeting this week, Tuesday night, at the Pilgrim Baptist Church. Now, Mark Baldwin, the editor of the Rockford Register-Star, sponsored this. It says, "Race, underachievement, and Rockford Public Schools discussed at the Register-Star hosted forum." The leader of the Rockford School District didn't show up. Now, it was four people on the Board showed up. The police chief didn't show up. The mayor didn't show up. They raping and murdering our kids in this city, and they wouldn't show up. Now, they supposed to be the leaders of the city and the leaders of the school district. The Rockford School District is wicked. For five years in a row, they kicked out more black males than others. Now, listen, they resegregating the schools. We have a forum about resegregating the schools, and the leaders don't show up? Guess who, guess who gets hurt in resegregation? Black kids. There ain't no instance in the history of the humanity, from Adam to now, where resegregation was good. When, when Adam was by himself, the Lord said it ain't good for him to be alone, and he made ease. Now, I can quote Roosevelt. All kind of areas, when they resegregate, it ends up in genocide. It's destroying our children. Now, listen, this is intentional.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Bob Gurle, to be followed by John Gou.
Good evening. My name is Bob Gurle. I know some of you. I'm the Governing Board Chair for Alignment Rockford. I want to thank you this evening for your thoughtful consideration of our request for RPS 205's funding share of the Alignment Rockford annual budget. It's part of your agenda this evening. As you're aware, Alignment Rockford is dedicated to supporting RPS 205, to focus on the greatest needs, gaps, from your strategic plan to achievement, and to engage, to bring to that relationship, the business and civic community, who are our partners and our board members, to help drive change, to help you make change and sustainable change in our community. We have three action teams: Healthy Starts, focused on early childhood; College of Career Awareness, and creating opportunities for children in school and grade school and high school to see careers firsthand; and a Pathways Team, to make sure every kid has a connection between what they're gonna do while they're in RPS 205 and as they leave that and go out into the community, either to career training, or to college, or to a job, and that those are clear pathways. In addition to that kind of work, Alignment also writes grants. We've been the, we helped write the Great Lakes Grant, which, to the benefit of the district, created about $400,000 of grant funding for work to help us build the pathways, to help us refine and kind of deliver on the Pathways 2.0 change we're looking to do going forward. We've also been a catalyst for many, many of the volunteer hours you see in your activities. I'd just request each of you, if you can, sign up on the Alignment Rockford webpage and attend our freshman expo next Wednesday at the ISC2, I think it's called, the one out on Riverside. We'll have all the freshmen out there for a day, over a hundred businesses showing the careers, the types of work we have in our region. So thank you for your consideration and your time.
I believe that's October 4th at nine o'clock. John Gou, to be, to be followed by Nancy Godowski. John?
First of all, thank you, first of all, for the opportunity, thank you first for the service that you're providing for our children and our community, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm a blue-collar writer who creates tools for parents and teachers, for grandparents and coaches, for counselors and community builders. The packet you received earlier this evening includes a teaching tool called Warriors Forever and a proposal called One Book, One City, One Vision of Hope. Warriors Forever is the story of what happened in Rockford before, during, and after West High's back-to-back basketball championships in 1955 and 1956, when there was only one state champion. It was a time when the river through Rockford seemed to disappear, and the community was united in a way that those who experienced it could never forget. Beyond the championships, Warriors Forever is a microcosm of our nation's trials and triumphs, a story of the challenges we faced then and now. Two of the main characters in the book are two exemplary educators, Alex Sedargus and his wife Alice Sedargus. Each reached what is, to me, the highest level of human development, which is to be a person of love. Each asked not what can I get, but how much can I give? They enriched the lives of thousands of students with their focus on empowerment through education, imbuing their students with vision, the ability to set goals, hope, believing in the goals, that goals are attainable, and strength, putting forth a necessary effort to achieve goals. Warriors Forever and One Book, One City, One Vision of Hope are designed to carry on the work of Alex and Alice today. They are not a panacea, but they do provide insight and create teachable moments and facilitate needed conversations. And Alex, as Mark Baldwin said in his editorial in the Rockford Register-Star, "Conversations start relationships, and relationships transform individuals and communities."
Thank you, John. I'm sorry. Your time is up. Appreciate, appreciate the gift as well. West High School, class of 1970. Yeah, okay. Tasha Reddick is the next speaker, after Nancy Godowski.
I just want to go over the highlights of poor maintenance in our so-called 21st century schools. Number one, bathrooms are filthy. No soap, no paper towels, or toilet paper, not replenished nightly. Two, used tampons and sanitary napkin containers are not emptied nightly and spill over onto the floor. Stench becomes unbearable, especially since we have no exhaust fans. Three, boys' bathrooms smell of urine. Stench is bad. Again, no exhaust fans. Special-needs bathroom container for soiled diapers can go for days without being emptied. Stench is also bad in there. Sinks in the bathrooms are not cleaned nightly unless the teachers or paras clean it themselves. Floors are not swept or cleaned nightly. Beverage spills remain and become sticky, and chewed gum remains. In our school, the day maintenance staff is not only doing their jobs, but they must try and do the night shift's job as well. That doesn't seem to be fair. What is the night shift doing? Nobody's checking on them. Our schools are breeding grounds for germs and diseases, especially with the heat and humidity we've had in non-air-conditioned buildings, especially with some of the more fragile health of our students. Last meeting, the Board, rightly so, questioned whether we have a contract with the maintenance people, the new maintenance people. At that time, we didn't. So who is legally responsible for this unhealthy environment? Maybe the Health Department, the EPA, and/or OSHA should investigate this hazardous environment that students and staff have been exposed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Tasha Reddick, to be followed by Maria Martinez.
Good evening. My name's Tasha Reddick, and I'm coming on behalf of my children, Edson and Ellis Elementary School. About a week or so ago, well, at the beginning of the year, they have you fill out a form where you, if your child has any medical condition, she needs medicine, asthma, anaphylactic shock, aka the EpiPen. My daughter had a reaction. She shouldn't have had a reaction because I filled out the paperwork, and she's allergic to sesame, and the school served something that had sesame seed in it, and no one notified me that my child had had a reaction. It was my son that, in fact, had alerted me, because he so happened to have lunch with his sister, and he knows how to use the EpiPen. No one alerted me of that situation. So my question to the Board is, if we have these issues, these safeguards in place so our children are not harmed, and we, as a parent, me as a parent, provide the tools so that my child can be safe, so that she doesn't have to have a reaction, what is gonna be done? All that the principal could say to me was that she was sorry. To me, that was unacceptable. No one notified me. Then my next thing is about education. We're using internet and smart boards now. They're not even sending any homework home. The teachers tell the kids, well, whatever you don't finish in class today is homework. They've been sent in school for over five weeks now, and they have not had any homework. They're only learning from what I teach them. I think that's unacceptable, and I think that we should get back to the basics, where we learn cursive and we learn by the book instead of the internet. Thank you.
Thank you, Tasha. Maria Martinez, to be followed by Ricky Naylor. So Maria Martinez here? No? Okay. Ricky Naylor, then, to be followed by, to be followed by, oh boy, Jessica Estrada.
You ready? Okay.
Yep.
All right. First of all, guys, I mean, you know, we do a lot of talking around here. We had all these different meetings, but at some point, you got to get down to business. So the way I see this thing right now with this Board and this school district is, this is your too-big-to-fail moment. Like, over the weekend, you know, I didn't go to that meeting, but it's a different meeting with my own people. But, you know, it's like, it's like this old song when it came on, you know, it's that old song by Teddy Pendergraph. He got me. I know him. Teddy Pendergraph, and Harold Melvin, The Blue Notes, when it's called Wake Up Everybody. And it was talking about teaching. It says, "Teach a, a new way, and then maybe these kids will listen to what you got to say." That's the whole thing. When your teachers, when I go all over the place, teachers say, "These kids don't listen." The kids say, "They don't know how to teach us." So at some point, it's got to be somebody now to come in there and bring these guys together, so they will listen, and these kids will learn. Now, I mean, now, if this district is really serious, you know, you guys got money, you know, Spirit Airlines, pretty cheap. We could go take a little field trip to a real school district where they had a five-year plan to turn those schools around. They did it in four years. The new guy came in and say, "Look, this failing and stuff is unacceptable." They had the same kind of kids you guys got, a lot of poor kids, a lot of Hispanic kids. They had a five-year plan. They turned those schools around in four years. So it can be done, if you got, you got to have, but like he said. What he had, though, maybe you guys don't got, you got, like Bill Gates even said, it don't matter what kind of plans you got, you got to have the right people. Until you get the right people, then it doesn't matter about these plans. Well, I want to be this, I want to be that. So, you know, and then, and that four-year plan, my timer's coming. They got thirty-three schools in that, in that, in that school district. All thirty-three schools were either passing or exceeding expectations, so it can be done.
Thank you, sir. Jessica Estrada, to be followed by Hugo Salas.
This is Jessica Estrada, mother of Genesis. She go to Riverdale School. And she, like a mother, come to ask to treat the kids equal like they should be treated. Because, again, the trailer is not safe for the kids, and it's not fair for bilingual kids to be outside, but they seem to make more money in the school than all the kids. It's unsafe to have eight-years-old kids and five-years-old kids outside. And we want all the kids to be inside. The plan that we want to do is make the gyms like a classroom. And always, we can look the budget and make sure if we can figure out something else to fix the situation before we want to get here. We need more security. Because any stranger can come and get the kids, and nobody seemed to be worrying about it. The system about picking up the child is broken. And because the children go to the trailer, there's a big unsafe act with the kids, because they're not able to go inside the school. They have to be able to go inside and out the main school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for helping. Hugo Salas, to be followed by Julio Conteras.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Hugo Solis. My son is Fabian Nebaris, at Riverdale School.
The main issue that he want to explain is the big problem that the kids in the trailer are going through. There's a lot of kids have been sick with urine infection, constipation, and we don't see nobody to do anything about it. Winter is coming, and I think it's cruel for the kids to be outside, in and out during the rain, snow, just to go to bathroom. We all know how the climate in Rockford is, and I think it's unsafe for us to have little kids outside. We know security, no supervision at all. He see all the projects that we got going on. He think that there's a lot of projects that we've been spending money on that they're not that important, that the kids we got now. They're little kids. There's little kids, and I don't think- There's little kids, and I don't think you guys, if you have any kids, you guys won't be putting your kids in this situation. I don't think it's fair for any kids to be in that situation, and we want the problem to be resolved again before this winter.
Thanks for your time. You have a nice night.
Thank you. Julio Contreras to be followed by Maria Heckborn.
Hi. My name is Julio Contreras. I have my son in the school at Riverdale.
He don't feel, um, he don't feel safe bringing the child to school because, you know, the safety situation, and again, is worrying about the crime around Rockford and the system The child is expressing the father not to be feeling safe. He's not learning like he's supposed to. He actually getting behind because he don't have the tools to learn like he's supposed to. He being feeling unsafe, scared because he don't, they don't, sometimes they got substitute teachers that don't allow the kids going to the bathrooms, and that's the reason why they being sick with constipation, urine infections. And again, they just substitute teachers, and he feel that the child is not being doing Yeah, it seem like the child doesn't have, again, any tools to learn like they're supposed to. We understand the class is new, but there's no reason why a child need to be going through these situations because, again, we know the money's there, and we can use it as something more important than the future of the kids, instead of something else that it might be worthless, worthless years longer.
Okay. Thank you. Maria Heckborn.
My, my daughter goes to school, to Riverdale School, and I don't agree the school have mobile homes as classrooms outside in the parking lot. I think this is racist, racism, racism. Because don't have bathrooms outside, and the kids are unsafe for the high crime in And it's not refu- refuge for the kids in case of tornadoes or fire. And the principal in the school say, "In case of tornadoes, he's going to take the kids to Kmart," and he was laughing. That's why I think this is racism, racism. And I, and I hope they move those kids inside the school before winter time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and sharing your comments with us. Are there any board member comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to then. The consent portion of our agenda, including the following: the meeting minutes of September 12th, 2017, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under ten thousand, construction bid request log, and travel. The bid recommendation for Lincoln Middle School Athletic Field and Field Housing demolition. Recurring contract for professional development services with NWEA. Recurring service agreement with Rockford Park District for after-school services at Ellis. The workers' compensation settlement for MB. The monthly investment report for July and August. Is there a motion in a second to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Second. By Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Siegel.
Seven D.
Seven D. Any others? Nine A and B. Any others? We'll have the coordinator call the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion to, in a second, to approve the purchase orders, which is seven D.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? None? Oh, do you have, do you have a question? Nope. Okay. Have the coordinator call the roll then on the approval of item seven D, purchase orders.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Abstain.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes as five yeses, one abstain, one absent.
I'll now take a motion in a second for item nine A, which is the recurring contract for professional development services with NWEA.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion on nine A? Mrs. McCullough.
Is Dr. Wolf's here? Yeah. He knew I was going to pull...
He was hiding there.
Yeah, yeah. He knew I was going to pull the second one, but I thought it was a good opportunity for you to understand because there's lots of letters there, the importance of this and how it works with our, our MAP grant, right? And, I mean, our MAP testing. So I just thought it's important that we understand why we need to pay for instruction on how to use that data.
Thank you. So NWEA is the vendor for the MAP testing that we started with last year. We used more professional development days with them last year than we are this year. This year, we're really partnering with Susan Fumo in continuous improvement and insourcing some of this professional development through the instructional coach model that are with her. And Heidi Detman, Susan, and a team of us are working on a three-year plan so that we can always bring on new teachers, new administrators to know, and then continue to move the progression of learning so that teachers know what to do with the results. It's great to be able to administer the tests, to get the reports, but really, the trick is to turn it into meaningful instruction in each and every classroom. When you're trying to move instructional practice in eighteen-hundred classrooms, it takes an awful lot of work. And so we're excited that the conversation is continuing to develop. Also, through that partnership through different departments, we're going to have a very in-depth training for the instructional coaches and the curriculum team that they were not afforded last year with the NWA representatives so that they'll be able to look through that lens as well. And so the, there are five days included in this agreement, paid for by Title II for professional development for the central office assigned personnel. And then the other forty days were building requests out of their Title I funds, and then there were two days included with the renewal of the assessments.
Thank you.
Questions on NWEA?
Thank you.
So the other one that Mrs. McCullough could call about...
We have to, we have to vote on that one first.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's call the roll on approval of nine A first.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
I'll take a motion in a second for a nine B, which is the recurring service agreement with Rockford Park District for after-school services at Ellis.
So moved.
Second. Connor, second by Mr. Dixon. Discussion or questions? Mrs. McCullough.
So again, I had a conversation with Dr. Wolf earlier today because this is something we've been saying over and over, we want achievement. What can we do additionally? This is a tutoring, basically, program for students after school. We want the community, we want people to know what, what kind of additional resources we're giving to our needy students. So it, the collaboration piece is with the Park District, and, and I'll give you a second here, Dr. Wolf, but I think what's important to me, and from what I've heard from other board members, is that this is a recurring contract. We did it last year. We're going to do it again this year. Did it, you know, did we see any outcomes and is, if we're going to continue on? Also, what's important to me was the fact that we are providing educators, we're providing the teachers to tutor. This contract merely is the Park District piece of it, their staff that they're going to have, and in addition to the tutors that the district is providing, we're also providing transportation, all which is being paid for out of Title I funds. And the building does get to choose how to spend their Title I funds. They obviously feel that this was successful enough last year to continue to do so. But it's almost, it's not quite, what is it, about a fifth of their Title I funds? So it's, it's a pretty good amount of money, and so I'll give you the floor if you have a couple other words to say about it, but I have asked that next year, if they're going to do it for a third year, they at least come to Ed Committee and have a conversation about some metrics and what they're seeing that they feel is successful, not just with this program. Ed Committee's going to try to look at alternative programs being brought in across the district. We want to look at what's being brought in, and Ms. Detman's going to work with us on this, what kind of programs we're doing, like Reading Horizons we talked about, so what, what we're doing district-wide and what individual schools are doing that's working so that we can understand those resources a little. Thank you.
So really, this is taking a program that we had success in, the Twenty-First Century After School Programming, and we're, we built a model with it using Title I funds because Ellis did not have that grant. The principal and her team thought that providing seats for up to one hundred students would be beneficial, and so we partnered with Maggie Kempel, our Twenty-First Century Program Coordinator, and the school team to design this. So the school's certified teachers provide the instructional program, as Mrs. McCullough said, and then the Park District helps move students and provide enrichment through the Arts Council, some other partnerships that are listed there in the Statement of Services. And then we try and remove the barriers so that students can receive those services, so we provide transportation home. Elementary schools don't have an activity bus, and so we provide that out of the grant. And so all told, it's about a sixty-eight thousand dollar investment by the school, and it's in line with their school improvement plan written for Title I.
Any other questions or discussions? Now, the coordinator then called the roll on the approval of nine B, recurring service agreement with Rockford Park District for after-school services at Ellis.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the closed session consent agenda items, including the following: the appointment of Cynthia Sims as ten-month middle school assistant principal at Flynn Middle School, the appointment of Kimberly Blanchard as twelve-month director of talent and development, a notice to remedy for Michael Hollingsworth, the HR organizational report and addendum, and the closed session consent items for student discipline. Unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student four-one-zero-one is expelled for the remainder of this school year. Student four-one-zero-two is expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire eighteen-nineteen school year. Expulsion for students two-zero-one-six, two-zero-one-eight are held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year. Expulsion for student two-zero-one-seven is held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year and the first semester of next school year. And the closed session content, consent EIAs were students one-zero-zero-eight, three-three-one-nine, three-three-two-zero, three-three-two-one, three-three-two-two, three-three-two-three, two-four, three-three-two-five, three-three-two-six, and two-seven, three-three-two-nine, three-three-three-zero, and three-three-three-one. Is there a motion in a second to approve these consent session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any discussion? No discussion. The coordinator called the roll. I jumped ahead. Any, any items that anyone would like pulled? Not other than the coordinator called the roll.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett.
Thank you, Mr. Scavano. I, first of all, want to thank Mr. Geely for his gift. I like the board members at Ed Committee. Last Tuesday, I received that gift as well, and anxious to learn more about the, the West Warriors of fifty-five and fifty-six and what we can learn from that lesson about our community. I think there, we often can learn a great deal from reflecting on our, our traditions and our history, and I look forward to diving into that along with the board members and seeing if there are some things we can pull out. So that was very generous. I also want to thank our board members for putting in a lot of extra time. Last weekend, we had our, it typically is about four times a year, strategic planning retreat. Our administrative team, led by Dr. Munson, worked really hard to prepare for that, and we had a focused discussion around our five goals, and specifically, a lot of discussion about our efforts to continue to increase student growth and student achievement, and I thought it was a very, very worthwhile conversation, and really, really pleased with the direction that we are heading as a district. We certainly know that we have a lot of work to do, but we remain committed to our vision of being the first choice for our families. We also remain very committed to making sure we have high-quality teachers in all of our classrooms that feel fully supported. We know there are some things about the start of the school year that didn't go as smoothly as we would like in terms of facilities. There were some hot days here, the last five days, that, that teachers and faculty and staff had to deal with in the buildings, but we remain deeply committed to our focus on increasing student achievement. The board has been very clear on that, and look forward to continuing on that journey with our ninety-day updates. Our first round of MAP testing, the window is closed, which is our achievement test, which is our growth, the, the testing we use for growth, and look forward to having that conversation in about two, two and a half months to talk about how our students grew from the beginning of the school year to the middle of the school year. I think there's a lot to be learned from that continued process and that continued emphasis on improvement. So more to come on that front, and we should be about ninety days out from our first update.
Thank you. Mrs. McCullough, we'll move on to committee reports. Education.
Education committee met in this room last Tuesday. We had two items on the agenda. The first one was an update on our charter schools. We didn't have much of an update because we kind of ran into a, a timing issue. They, just like the district, don't, we, we don't have the, the tests to report, and so we've asked them to come back later in the year with more information. Two of our charter schools are up in twenty nineteen, and some of the conversation that we had was what kind of accountability we're looking for district-wide, not just charter schools, but in our classrooms as well, that we should hold our own classrooms accountable the way, I mean, that we should hold our charter schools accountable the way that we want to hold our classrooms accountable for growth and achievement in our students. And so a little bit of conversation about how we'd like to see that moving forward as the contracts, as we talk about renewing charter schools. Little bit of update on Title I. I don't have a lot to report. I kind of used my time with Dr. Wolf for the, the other because I wanted us to all to be on the same page as to what we were voting for. But I, as I said a moment ago, we'd like to hear more about those, those kind of programs that we're doing across the district to help our most needy students. And then we had a closure on our smart sharing presentation that we had started the week before. Mrs. Fumo finished off by talking about what we are doing district-wide, what we're looking at. Last, last Ed Committee meeting, we had reports from principals at three schools, in elementary, middle, and high school, to talk about how the smart sharing was being used in their buildings, but the conversation was more how it needs to be used at a classroom level to determine goals and outcomes for students. And we meet again in this room the third Tuesday of October. That'll be our next meeting at five-thirty PM. Thank you.
Mr. Rollins, the finance committee report.
Finance committee met in this room on Wednesday, September thirteenth, at five-thirty PM. We welcomed three new committee members, Diana Cruden, Denise Pearson, and Josh Tatman. We only had one agenda item on the, for the meeting, a multi-year projection of our finances from Forecast Five Analytics. from Forecast Five Analytics, Inc., which are consultants who we've contracted with for a number of years, to help us with our multi-year financial projections. And I always, you know, I always take these projections with a grain of salt because you, the output is only as good as the input, and the input depends on a bunch of assumptions. And these were very, admittedly very rough, because they had just passed the school funding reform. None of that had been factored in. Everybody's still scrambling to figure out exactly what effect that will have. So without factoring any of that in and just looking at some assumptions on increased expenditures over the years, and no additional funding from the state, what they were looking at was a deficit of, in fiscal year 2019, of $10 million, $10.8 million, and a deficit in fiscal year 2020 of $20 million. So, you know, we've done that before, and it's useful mostly to sort of see where you're at and what the administration is going to have to do in terms of tightening its belt in areas and looking for additional areas to save money. I will also say, you know, one other thing that we talked about briefly, I know that everybody's still sort of putting the pen to the paper to figure out what the school funding reform means for Rockford. Generally, and I think probably the more times we can start talking about this, the better, the headlines have been that the new school funding formula will result in a little, in excess of $5 million more in general state aid for the Rockford School District. But what you don't see the headlines about is that the state has simultaneously reduced our CPPRT even more than what we had anticipated, more like there, by an additional, I think, $1.8 million is what we're estimating at this point. So the net pickup from the funding reform is likely to be more in the area of $3 million rather than $5 million. So that's just something we probably need to get, get in people's consciousness, because everybody's got that $5 million figure in their head now, and it looks like it's not going to be true. The October meeting has just been canceled today for a variety of reasons, and so the next meeting of the Finance Committee will be in November, on the first Monday of November, whatever date that happens to be.
Okay. Mr. Connor, operations?
Operations has not met. We will meet on Tuesday, October 3rd, at 6:30. Amongst the topics that will be on there would be in particular about follow-ups with earmark. If you all remember, at the last meeting, I gave the update that there was a report from administration, both in terms of staffing or the lack of it, and some equipment issues. So we've been told that there'll be some more information about that at the next meeting. One thing that I think is relatively new that I, I apologize, I neglected to ask this one upfront, but I've heard that there's some floor buckling at East High School's gym as a result of the flooding, which has been, I think, more than a year ago. So I think one of the things I'd like on the Tuesday is just an update. It's not the entire gym floor, it's just one little section of it, but I'd still like to know what we're doing about that one. And I think the main event is going to be about earmark and a response to clear issues in the, in the transition from the GCA to earmark.
Thank you. We are now on to our action items. Our first item is the speech and language pathologist, S. Powell, that Mrs. Lawrence presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this position?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Second item is the Ed Mentum Exact PEP. Mrs. Alt presented that. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussions? Now, now the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Our next action item is the Giovanni's contract that Mr. Zetiker presented. Are any, motion and a second first?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion? Ms. McCullough.
Yeah, to ask legal, do we have to have a contract with them if we're just paying a bill? I don't understand why we have a contract.
The original proposal, which is up for signature, is the actual contract that was supposed to be signed. Now, irrespective of whether or not you have a contract, you have to pay the bill. So this is the way to facilitate paying that bill.
Okay. And so the amount, just to make sure we're on the same page, the amount of that contract is for the $19,000, what was it, $986?
Yeah. And it actually was four separate, so, yes.
It was four separate events, right. But the total combined, and there is no additional monies in that contract for future, any, any future ones will have to come forward, and we would have to have a conversation about them then.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Through this fiscal year.
Any other questions or comments? Now, now the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Giovanni's contract.
Oh.
Mr. Rollins.
Is, is the contract attached?
Somewhere?
It was last time.
Because I'm not seeing it.
It is on board docs for me.
I'm looking at board docs. What are you looking at? Which, which attachment are you looking at?
The one that says Giovanni's Blanket PO Contract Review Form.
That's the review form.
Then the one below that says contract document for Giovanni's.
And that is not the contract document.
All right.
And that it still says $24,902.
Although that document does say total sum to be paid pursuant to this contract, $24,902.
Still looking for the contract.
Should be the event proposal. It is. It's, it's very basic, Tim. It talks about the event proposal. That's the last. Is it the last one?
The banquet event order is what is the contract?
Yes. That's correct. So the obligations are very simple.
Okay. Just, I want to be clear on what we're voting on. So that's the contract we're voting on?
Yes, there's separate ones for each event.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Now, now the coordinator then call the role on the approval of Item C, which is the Giovanni's contract.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. Our next item is a revision to exhibit the application for student fundraising activity. I believe that's a board policy, 7.325. Mrs. Holy presented that. Is there a motion to, and second, to approve this item?
So moved. The only thing I'm going to say is, in the recommendation, it says to approve the revisions to the exhibit. I think it is, isn't it, the policy and the exhibit, both?
Just the exhibit. We didn't make any changes to the policy, just the exhibit attached.
Oh, okay, there's two. Okay.
Mr. Siegel, is there a second down there? Thank you.
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion? Now, now the coordinator then call the, the role on the approval of this revision.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Our next action item is the comment agreement for removal and relocation of electrical utilities for the new school on Kishawaki Street area. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Seeing now, now the coordinator call the role on the approval of the comment agreement.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. The next items are three architect agreements. Everybody okay with doing these together? Okay, we'll do that. So the three items are the Bradley &amp; Bradley Architect Agreement, the Hagney Architects' Agreement, and the Richard L. Johnson Agreement. So can I have a motion and a second to approve those items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Seeing now, now the coordinator then call the role on Items F, G, and H, which are the three architect agreements.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Our next item is the intergovernmental agreement with Rockford Park District regarding Walker School. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCullough?
So I'm looking at a copy of the IGA that we signed with the city, which was signed on January for, January 24th of 2017. And that was the one that we asked any of the RFPs, the proposals for use of the property to come through the city. There was a process, and any proposal can, was supposed to be due to the city no later than May 30th, 2017. And then there was a report, a report that was supposed to come to the Building Disposition Committee in July of 2017. We don't have a Building Disposition Committee, so I don't think we had anybody from the city come give us this report. But then it also states in here, if no RFPs have been received and accepted by the district on or before September 30th, which, is that Friday or Saturday? Saturday. The district will proceed with the disposition of the property as allowed by state law. So I just have a question. I'm, it seems to me that we haven't followed the process. It hasn't come to our, our committee. It's coming to us here as a vote. We're voting on it on the 26th. You know, it's too late for, I guess, for anybody to put an RFP in with the city since there was a deadline there. So technically, we, there's none to be brought forward, but I'm just not sure why this was brought to us for a vote. At least, we should close out the contract the September 30th date and brought, be brought to the next meeting. That's my first question. So could someone speak to that?
Is that a legal question?
I don't know if it's legal. I don't know if it's operations. I don't know who it is. I did, and I did bring this question up to administration before this moment, so this is not a gotcha moment or anything.
Mr. Schmidt, you want to take that one?
With this, we did bring it to the Operations Committee, which is now pretty much part of the Building Disposition Committee through the recommendation that the letter that we received, or the memo we received from the city of Rockford based off the RFP, that nobody solicited responses for it. So based off of that, bringing it to the Ops, we brought forward the recommendation for the intergovernmental agreement with Walker.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
Well, that was my first question. I'll give Mr. Connor the floor.
No, no, go. Just go.
Okay, since you're up there, here's my next question, because, you know, and I really do think that we should have closed our window. I'm just going to say that I think we should have closed our window on the 30th, just because that's the end of the time, even if there aren't any, so, from, from my perspective. But as I read through this, one of the things that bothers me a little, we're going to, and we as a, as a committee, and I was part of the whole, we're going to take the building down, and I think that the community is very much in favor. We had those meetings, like 85% of the neighbors wanted it to be a park. I truly understand that there's a timing with the weather and the like that we don't want to, an issue over the winter. What I don't understand is, we're going to give them the property, we're going to take the building down, and I understand, you know, making sure that things go down, what was it, four, four inches, four feet, whatever, you know, you have to break up the basement floor to a certain amount. But what I don't understand is, it is then the park districts to make it a park. And yet, part of this says that we have to put all the grass in as well as taking the building down and making it flat, and, and, and I'm sure the specs that they give for making, for the grass are what they probably use in their other parks. And let me just tell anybody listening that they're really specific, like if they look at a six-by-six inch square, it has to have 90% grass and no weeds, and that's after two mowings. And so, I don't know, it just seems very onerous as a district. And, and so I asked the question, you said, well, then we give it to our, you know, we make it as part of the bid, and then it's, they have to make it right. But I'm sure there's a cost involved in that. And we already know that taking this down, we allocated about $500,000 per building. We already know we're over on that. It's probably going to be at least $550,000 or more, right? And now you add, well, more.
We don't know until we design it and bid it out.
Right, right. But that's kind of-
And that 500, we had a contingency and some other, like 10,000 or 15,000 for some other site work out there that's needed.
I mean, how much site work are we responsible for, for the park to make it a park? And we're going to leave playground equipment for them. I think that's great. It's going to get used. The neighborhood's going to use it. But I just, not to be nickel and dime, but it's, it's, it's something I'd, I'd rather that they take care of themselves. We'll, we'll level it, and we'll take care of it. And maybe I'm alone on that. So that would be one of my thoughts and concerns and-
Mr. Connor?
Well, first of all, there's been, from my point of view, some misinformation about this, so let me make sure, for any, anybody watching, that we have all the facts. Number one, the process went on for about 15 months. We had numerous public meetings. We went through three different neighborhood associations. We had, I believe, three different meetings, and we spent a lot of time, so we made sure that we got public input. So the first fact is, by the way, the number is about 70%. So the number are plus, a little bit 70% plus. But the point is, the overwhelming group of the people that live in the neighborhood, he said pointedly, and for a fact, I'll say it again, that live in that neighborhood, voted 70%. So the driver behind the demolition of Walker School was really something the neighborhood, the folks in that area, wanted. So that's the first fact. I want to make sure that's on the, that is pointed out to everybody. Number two is that there were many possible options as long ago as at least a year, if not more, actually 15 months ago, where people had a bunch of ideas. So it wasn't like overnight, just for the RFP process, that it was known that there needed to be, number one, a viable plan, and, number two, funding. So this wasn't something that just happened out of the clear blue. So the process was followed. City of Rockford did an RFP. There were no replies to that. The next point I want to make very clear is that even if somebody had come up with somebody had come up with a plan in the original agreement, one of the things we said is, we would look at it with the city and come back to the neighborhood if there were any actual proposals to see if they were viable. Because let me remind everybody that there have been other cases of schools in the Rockford area where they were either purchased or given to a party. And then within, you know, several years, that party backed out essentially. And that building is now bringing down not just property values, but its crime centers. And, um, you know, nobody in the neighborhood liked it. So the one thing I'm going to say about this is, somebody can give a flight of fancy, oh, I'm making up a number that $120,000 might be added to the, um, to the rolls. But number one, there's no guarantee of that at all, neither in the number or the timeframe, and nothing says that that's going to be a viable option. So no matter what kind of wishful thinking goes on, the fact is that there has to be some kind of commitment to the neighborhood. And if people note, there have been a number of incidents lately where people have broken in and caused damage to that school. And if you see the responses, there's a lot of discomfort amongst the neighbors on that. So for all those reasons, and the fact that we went through this process, what I'm going to say personally is, we're not going to drag this out further because the 70% group up front, thank you very much for being patient because we said we would take time, and I believe a year was, and I don't remember the exact timeframe, was what we were going to commit to make sure that we had time to do alternatives. Because once you knock down a building, clearly that's it. But I really want to give some comfort level to the public. Number one, thank you to the neighbors in that area for participating. And number two is that we recognize our commitment right up front, which is do no harm to the neighborhood, and we're going to follow through with that.
Any other comments? Ms. McCulloch?
No, I already had to turn. I'll come back. Mr. Rollins turned his on.
Okay, Mr. Rollins?
No.
I don't see, did you have a comment?
I just had a question, really.
Question?
So looking at this, I'm just realizing there's not really a very clear timeline for conveying the property of the park district. So, and the reason I was looking for is because of Mrs. McCulloch's comments about our requirements to mow the grass. So, so, could somebody explain to me what the intention is? Because as I read this, we're supposed to convey it to us as soon as we close it, but first we have to tear the school down. I get all that. But then there, there are all of these weird requirements about how we mow the grass. Is it our intention to, as soon as we tear it down and grade it and seed it, are we conveying it at that point? And is the park district obligated to take it? No. What's the intention?
In that IGA, once, um, we tear the building down, we grade it, we seed it. Once the lawn is maintained, or established, I should say, then we'll convey it over to the park district.
What time period is that?
Well, if we look at it, ideally, uh, we'll probably want to, you want to do about April. If we sit there and seed it in April, it's going to take, I don't know, a couple, three months in there, and then we'll convey it over there. The standards that we have in there for the seeding are the same standards that we've used in the previous IGAs with the park district, which was actually a little bit less, because initially in our standards, we had the same seeding pattern we were going to do for the new schools.
All right. But it doesn't have to happen within a year, if I remember?
Within a year after both boards. So basically, if the board did approve it tonight, a year from now, we would, uh, tear the building down, did all the demolitions out there, did the site work, put the grass up in there, mow the grass, turn it over to the park district within a year from whenever the board approves this.
Actually, I don't think that's what it says. It says we have to tear it down within one year. And I can't find anything in here that says when the park district has to take it from us. So I don't know if that should be a clarification or-
There just needs clarification.
Can we, this is a legal question. Now, I, I would recommend, or I'd ask if we actually need to table it, or can we pass it with the understanding that certain changes are made? So like clarification on the point that Mr. Rollins is bringing up.
You can make a motion to amend, um, the motion that's out on the table right now. Or you can, um, make a motion to hold it over until October 10th. But I don't know. Why I have my light on, Mr. Rollins.
Okay.
So, so let's be clear. Our two options are, if there's certain language that we absolutely have to have beforehand, we have to wait till the 10th to do it and change it. That's one option. And the other option is, we could make a motion with an intention. So if we didn't have exact contract language, can we make a motion nonetheless to, if I might say so, incorporate the, um, perspective that Mr. Rollins has given?
If you're trying to change it, then you should make a motion to amend the original motion to incorporate in the-
Right, but it's the language. I'm not asking about the viability of the amendment. I'm asking what is the nature of the language that we actually have to say? So if there are things missing, as I think Mr. Rollins is saying, can we say, and it's updated for the following? You don't, we don't have to have the specific language in writing tonight that would make that alteration. We just give the direction for making acceptable language.
I think you might want to just hold it over and then we can work.
On the language. That's what I was asking. Okay.
Ms. McCulloch?
So I'm making the motion to hold this over till the October 10th meeting?
Second.
Do I have to clarify why? Or just, that's it? Good. Thank you.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Are there questions or comments on that before we call the roll? I have a question. One is, uh, does that, um, change anything with what the park district has already approved? I mean, would they have, would they have to vote on it again if we revise it?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So I would delay it further.
So we'd delay it further.
But no, we've just been told it's going to be a year anyways, next April. We're still going to own it. I mean, we might as well get it right instead of,
Okay.
Instead of us lay people on the floor trying to add and amend and put things in, let's send it back to legal and have them write it up as to what we really want for it to say. Does anybody else?
Anybody else have comments or questions? Now, we have a motion and a second to amend, uh, to hold this over to the October 10th board meeting so that, um, language can be clarified regarding the dates of turning over the property, I think is the main topic Mr. Rollins was asking for.
I don't.
So I'll take a roll call.
Could I say, I think, if I might say so, and Mr. Rollins should clarify, it sounded like there was timing, but there were also some, if you will, terms and conditions in there that were missing. So I think, let's be specific about what we're asking to be changed.
My, my only question really was, you know, if you're looking at a, a contract for purchase and sale of real estate, there's usually a closing date. And there's really no closing date. There's not even a way to calculate a closing date here. So there's really nothing in this contract that says that the park district has to take this over from us by any specific time period. And that's all I'm really looking for. There is, I just noticed one other nit, too, is if we're going to correct it. So the, uh, section for addresses for notices is labeled as section 12, but it's actually stuck between section 6 and section 7. So as long as we're cleaning things up.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt, did you have another comment you want to make?
Section I, demolition requirements, number three. That verbiage in there kind of states that we're tearing down the Walker. We'll transfer it over by one year. And what's in, what's entailed into that demolition is demolish it, fill it, crush the stone, do the seeding as per the exhibits, exhibit B, and then we'll convey it over one year after we agree that, that the board agrees on this IGA.
What section are you looking at?
I, three demolition requirements for Walker School.
The district will tear down Walker School within one year after the approval of this agreement by both the district and RPD boards. Right? Okay.
The teardown shall include, and just, it, it describes what the teardown's going to be, and then how we're going to prepare the site.
I thought the issue was when they actually have to take possession. Is that, so in other words, you'd have to have the date, if you will, the equivalent of a closing date, is what I heard.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the, on that amendment.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Okay.
No, how about the actual vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have-
Do we have to pass that, too?
No, if it's tabled.
Right. We don't have to vote on it because the big table over. Okay. That's clear.
I hate to have wasted people's time, but is there a way to get a read from the board on how much site prep that we're really responsible for since we're going to have to send it back to them anyways?
I'm not sure what you're, you're, you're asking if the park district should be doing some of that work and not us?
Well, I think they should do the grass. I do. And, and I'm just wondering how the rest of the board feels about it. And, and maybe you feel like-
Remember that was tied to our agreement with Cherry Valley School. These, there were multiple sites that were included, so you're-
And this was part of it?
Yeah, you were unwinding an entire-
So, well, see, that's important.
Yeah, I guess for me, it would be this is-
Okay, thank you.
I would not recommend you go with that.
Right.
Kind of changing the rules.
Right.
I didn't know that was tied to it.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just going to say that if that's what Mr. Schmidt says is the standard that we've been going by, then we should go by that, so. I will, I'll, I'll throw in a comment. I'm disappointed in the delay, but I'd like to get this thing wrapped up. All right, so we are now on to our final two action items, which are two real estate purchases. Okay, if we do these together, they are for the real, real estate purchase of 514 Catlin Street and 721 Kishawaki Street.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Connor? Is there a second? Mr. Rollins, second. And any questions or discussion? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the, on the approval of these two real estate purchases.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. We're now on to new business, and Dr. Jarrett has our first item, which is the DMG, DMG Group Planning Session.
Yes, this, uh, this work is under 10, is an under $10,000 contract in of itself, but we have a previous relationship with this vendor, so I need to bring it forward. What we are asking the district management group to come in and do is spend two days with key members of our leadership team and the REA to start building an action plan so that if, if at some point the innovation zone concept in the, uh, collective bargaining agreement is ratified, that we are ready to move forward immediately with, uh, some of the key constructs that are baked into that, such as site-based budgeting. There's a lot of capacity building that's going to be required in order for this work to be done, assuming that we have some of this, up to six schools taking us up on that. I do not want to wait until, uh, that occurs. If for whatever reason, the, this particular agreement is not ratified as part of the contract, we still will benefit greatly from moving forward with site-based training for principals and building-level leadership. So I see no risk, um, in terms of the value of the training, uh, because this capacity building is something that I think is valuable. All we are committing to at this point, so there's no risk of circumventing the bargaining process, is capacity building. I've run this by the union leadership. I've talked to individual board members about this in, in one-on-one meetings, uh, so hopefully no surprises here. This expertise is going to be needed. I do want to preface that this, this initial $9,000 may be step one. Depending on what the action plan requires, we will have to analyze what our internal capacity is to roll out things like site-based budgeting, training in our schools, and some of the other pieces. So there may be additional funding that is required. Obviously, I will, not, I'm not committing to any of that until we know what the action plan is, what the timeline is, how many fiscal years this rolls over. But we have a pretty ambitious undertaking that we're hoping to, to start on, which is up to six schools, building the ability to, through site-based, uh, budgeting and some other restrictions being removed from the collective bargaining agreement, and administrative procedures that are required. Uh, some of those, that flexibility being provided, this would help pave the way. Uh, district management group has expertise doing this work in many, many communities. We would not be reinventing the wheel, is the bottom line. So I think their expertise will be helpful, and that we can benefit from learning from other communities that have tried some of the movement towards site-based leadership and management.
Is there any discussion or questions for Dr. Jarrett and Mr. Connor?
Yep. One quick question is, since they do have experience, would it be fair to assume that they've got a series of metrics or some success criteria that once we look at it, that they would come in and say, here's what success looks like going forward, and we can measure to that?
Does, oh, there it goes.
There it goes.
I think a big part of that is going to be, uh, one of the things that we had in our initial conversation, as we talked about what this proposal would look like, is we have to be really clear about what we want. Saying that we want to move towards site-based management can move anything towards a weighted student funding formula, all the way to just simply giving principals more capacity to do budgets themselves and everything in between. So we, at, we first have to be very clear what we're looking for. From that point, yes, we will be measuring success metrics. One of the key things that will be a component of this, if you give principals the ability to have more control over their budget, we have to remember that the vast majority of all dollars that's, that are spent by principals are for staff. When discretionary dollars are spent, one of the constructs that they do a really good job of helping develop is the idea of a term they've coined called academic return on investment. And the idea, so one of the key success metrics would be, if staff is utilized in a different way, uh, or a program is used with additional dollars that are freed up through site-based budgeting, how could those investments, it, it, we have to set that up as a true tie to student achievement. I think we had an earlier comment, uh, by Mrs. McCulloch about the investment we're making with Title I dollars at Ellis. How do we know it worked? Part of this training will, will be, how do we look at budgeting and staffing differently at the building level? Another part of it will be setting up those metrics for success, like academic ROI.
Any other discussion or questions? Not, this will come to us for our approval on our October 10th meeting. The next item is the Alignment Rockford Funding. I don't think Bridget's here. Is she? No, so.
I'd be happy to speak on behalf of Alignment Rockford. And, uh, Mr. Scirravano and I are both members of the governing board. I've been intimately involved with the work, and we're appreciative that Bob Girl, as the governing board president, is here to represent Alignment Rockford. It's an organization that, um, just to name a few of the contributions that I would like to highlight that have had a huge impact on the district. One would be national recognition that we've received through Ford Motor Company for our high school redesign. Another key point I would point out is that, um, we've had about a 215% increase in volunteers over the last six years. Alignment Rockford has certainly contributed to that, along with excellent work from our parent community engagement department. A third metric I would point to is, under the leadership of Kim Nelson and our early childhood team, we've seen a very dramatic increase in the number of full-day seats, as well as, as well as total seats for early childhood. The Healthy Starts Committee has been, uh, a, a big help for the work with early childhood as well. So, um, really, really pleased with the partnership that we've received from Alignment Rockford. We were able to hire the, uh, the current, uh, the, the former executive director is now our current director of College of Career Radiance. There's a strong partnership there. And, uh, through succession planning, I think we've had, we have a, a, a strong leader in place to take the mantle. Excited to work, uh, with Alignment Rockford for another year. The model has been one-third, one-third, one-third. We're a little short of that right now with the $70,000 proposal. But at this point, um, I did want to at least make sure we maintained our current commitment level. And, um, with that, I'll entertain any questions about, uh, the board and the district's commitment. We, this is a, this is a, this is a, a spend we've done, I think, for at least four, if not five consecutive years. The dollar amount has not changed in that time. I think as far as return on investment, it has been, uh, it'd be pretty hard to argue that it hasn't had a pretty significant impact on the way the community feels about our schools and the, and some of the real positive impact in terms of improving student achievement and outcomes in our district.
Further comments or questions? Not, this will come to our, uh, for approval at the October 10th board meeting. Um, and then the last, uh, item is the, uh, Mr. Zetiker on the National Equity Project Building Leadership for Equity or Cultural Competency.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Scirravano. You know, we felt like a robust approach to equity throughout our district is a critical piece, um, for the district's vision of becoming the first choice for families. This process started nearly two years ago when neighboring dis, district invited, um, RPS administration to participate in a training around cultural competency. And once, once participating in that training and realizing the benefits, we began researching organizations that could assist RPS with the initiative, and we determined that the National Equity Project met our needs for this specific professional development and training. Some of the things that National Equity Project brought to the table to offer for their services is, through observation, I was able to witness that they really created an emotional safety to have very difficult conversations around race and culture, and provided support to, for all participants to have those conversations. They really have a large staff with the capacity to do the work in a large organization that we are. They've also worked with similar-sized districts that we are, as well as districts who have had similar past experiences within their city and within their school district around race and segregation. They also then also have a model that they want to build the capacity for an equity design team that are, is made up of champions here in the district. The partnership with National Equity Project will allow us to do several things. It'll allow us to increase knowledge and consciousness, to understand the root causes of persistent educational inequities, engage in a productive dialogue and learning about equity issues at the individual institutional instructional, excuse me, structural level in Rockford, and to be able to assess and develop leading for equity competencies to increase the capacity of leaders across roles to lead with equity. Part of this proposal, I collected a team of leaders throughout the district. There are six of us that make up an equity design team. We will be the direct contact with National Equity Project to create a project charter. And this charter will outline core purposes, measurable goals, and decision-making processes through this three-year training and investment.
Can you talk a little bit about how that three-year will, will be rolled out?
Yeah. And typically, you want to take an approach of a, of a bottom-up approach with certain initiatives. We looked at designing this as more of a top-down. This, we wanted to make sure that we started with Dr. Jarrett and the cabinet-level folks around the importance of this training, and for us to be able to build the skills necessary to have conversations and to address equity issues in our district. So the first year will be around our design equity team and high-level executives on the administrative team. Year two, we will funnel in more central office folks, building administrators, REA leadership, possible community members, to again, go through trainings and to support the change process with, with equity. And year three, then, will be committed to classrooms, to teachers, and REA and other building support staff, to ensure that everybody is receiving the same training, so that everybody is on the same page.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I just want to start by saying that we've been talking about this for a number of years, and I'm glad to see that we're finally moving forward with something, and that, that approach that Mr. Zetiker was just talking about is the same approach that Harlem used, although they used a different vendor, but it's kind of starting at the top, and then doing the work at the top, and then sort of moving slowly down to the bottom. I just had questions about the proposed services' timeline and costs. So it indicates that there was an institute in July of 2017 that eight people would go to. Did they, did we actually do that, or are we changing the proposed timeline?
Yep, we did not do that. Had conversations around, with National Equity Project around that estimated cost. I wanted to keep it in the proposal to be able to spread out, so that National Equity Project may be able to be onsite more with us. That is going to be worked in with the actual contract that we negotiate with them from this proposal. And so we obviously didn't make the July one, but worked with our contact, Heidi Gill at National Equity Project, to funnel those dollars into more support here on our campus.
And then my next, it's not really a question, more a plea. So I see that you're scheduling us for a two-day retreat in December, and that you're scheduling us for three half-day sessions in January, March, and May. The sooner, obviously, you can tell us
Yes.
what days you would like to do that, the more likely it is that we're going to be able to actually fit that into our schedule.
Yep, I wanted to make sure I brought this to board before establishing those dates. There's a few potentials on the calendar that we can communicate out to make sure that it, it works for the board and administration.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah, one quick question, which is, when we vote on this, are we voting on the entire 175, 340, or just for next?
It would be for the full three-year proposal.
It would be for the full three-years. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. As you well know, we've been discussing cultural competency and district leadership team for a year and a half, two years, something like that. So, thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing it. Okay, this will also come to us for a vote at our next board meeting, right? Okay. Is there any other business for this evening? Now I'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Connor, second. By Mr. Dixon, and all those in favor say aye. All the same sign, we are adjourned at 8:31. Thank you.